Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting for June 26, 2012, to order. I'd like to ask everyone to rise. Mr. George Monroe from Evanston Avenue Baptist Church is going to lead us in prayer, to be followed by the pledge. Mr. Monroe, he's...
Shall we pray? I do, Father, again, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, that we can gather here, Lord. Also, we pray for the mayor and women in town at this time, Lord, that you'll undertake for him, and for the many things that has been accomplished here throughout his term, Lord, that he'd be with him and around over him, Lord, and we thank you for our manager and our commissioners, Lord, that you'll undertake and protect them at all times. Now be with this meeting, Lord, that you would be the ones, decisions that have to be made, Lord, that they might be the right decisions. And we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Monroe. I appreciate all the time that you've given during my ten and a half years here to come and lead us in prayer. Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Vice Mayor Galorin?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know Norma Heran is here. If I could ask her to step up over here, please.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. Norma is a resident of the city of Muskegon, and she and her husband, Dr. Joe Heran, who is a dentist down at Lakeside, wanted to do something to beautify the community that they live in and that they love. And Hackley Park was where they chose to do this. And they made a commitment to beautify it, to put color back into it. And we have a resolution here from the city of Muskegon. This project was done late spring. And she wasn't here during the wintertime for us to go through the thanking her, so we're so glad. And I'm so glad that I am here to be able to be a part of this, to share this resolution and this wonderful gift that you've given to our community. Whereas Norma and Joe Heran share a love of flowers and wish to share their love with the community, Norma decided in the summer of 2011, after her husband's passing, to honor him by improving the landscaping of Hackley Park. And whereas Norma created a donor-advised fund in September of 2011 and approached the Muskegon Community Foundation to assist her to make that dream come true, with the approval of the Historic District Commission and the Muskegon City Commission, her vision is becoming a reality. And whereas work on the park commenced in the spring of 2012, and is expected to be completed later in the summer, citizens will enjoy a lush and flowering Hackley Park, a permanent memorial to her husband, Joe. And whereas Norma created an endowed fund at the Muskegon Community Foundation to ensure that a permanent legacy, recognizing the Herans and their ongoing contribution to Hackley Park, will continue for years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city commission is honored to recognize Norma and Joe as citizens of Muskegon County. Their love of the community will forever be known through their passion to beautify Hackley Park for all to enjoy for many, many years to come. Norma, I know it's not much, but from our hearts, we tell you how much we appreciate what you've done, and we appreciate the love that you have for this community and Hackley Park. Thank you so much. You know, if you haven't had an opportunity to drive down there, I mean, it's really a park that's once again in transition, a park that carries so much history for our community and is in the transition to add beauty. I know that when Bob Chapla came and presented it to the city commission, he talked about sprucing it up a bit, fresh look and more color, and that's certainly that. But I think, Norma, I think the nicest thing about that is when people go down to enjoy our beautiful Hackley Park, it'll put a smile on their face. And you know, as a dentist, I think a smile on the face will probably make Dr. Heran very happy. So, thank you so much. I want to take a second before we start the meeting, too. This is, as many of you know, this is my last meeting. But I want to talk about the Community Foundation for Muskegon County, former Muskegon County Community Foundation. And, you know, I wasn't really too familiar with the foundation and the work before I started. You learn, if you're just a regular citizen, you learn things about the community if you read the paper and stuff, and you certainly learn it if you get involved in your community. But they have played such an important role in the last ten and a half years of, I say ten and a half years because that's what I've been involved in, but of the growth of this community. I mean, I stop and think about the things that have been discussed in the paper during the ten and a half years, that three of us have been together, the vice mayor and Commissioner Spataro, and I see former vice mayor Bill Larson is here, and I don't know, former vice mayor Karen Bowie's still here, but she was here. And, you know, the first major project that we had was the Smart Zone in downtown Muskegon, down where the Michigan Alternative Renewable Energy Center is. And there was, that was an exciting proposal for the city of Muskegon. We were competing against other communities across Michigan and other universities. You had to be paired up to get these grant funds to work on new energy. And the fact that we were successful at doing that amazed many people, and amazed many people in this community, because we were just sort of stuck in, we never get it here in Muskegon. And it wasn't easy to put that together. It took the work of a whole lot of people within this community. But when it came down to the final hours of the deal being put together, in a meeting with President Mark Murray, he was requesting the community to come up with more money, the business, the building was going to be downsized, and actually, the people who were building it, they had to chirp their price down a little bit. And fortunately, as a community, we had worked together prior to that request being done in the funding. And the Community Foundation had stepped up and made a commitment to make that project happen. So there's one area. We talk about the redevelopment of our downtown. The Community Foundation, the Paul C. Johnson Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Muskegon partnered together to purchase the property that Mr. Pearlman had owned, the former Muskegon Mall, proceeded to move forward in the redevelopment, the rebirth of our downtown. That wouldn't have been possible without those four partners at the time. But certainly, it was the leadership of the Community Foundation and the Paul C. Johnson Foundation that put that together. And that work continues to this day. The three entities of the Chamber and the Paul C. Johnson, the Community Foundation, continue to be a watchdog, as well as the city commission and the planning commission, over the redevelopment of our downtown. But I want to talk about the funds there for just a second. This is going to seem like a commercial for the Community Foundation, but just what Dr. and Norma Heran have just done for this community and others. I could give you a long list, it would take forever, the people in the ten and a half years that have committed to the beauty of this community, all of the statues in downtown and the artwork that's been done over the last ten years. But there's so many funds that are there now, that I want to appeal to the people in Muskegon County to understand, you can be a part of the Community Foundation. Ideally, they would love for you to make a $10,000 or more endowment to them for a fund of your choice to go towards what you want to. But not everybody in this community is capable of doing that. But we can take a look at some of the funds that are there and what their missions are. And if it's a mission that fits what our ideas are, we can make a commitment to those funds. So I would ask for you to take a look, if you have access to a computer, at the funds and what their missions are, and make those type of commitments. I will tell you that tonight, my wife and I gave a check to Mr. Chapla for the Love Our Lake Shore Trail Fund. City of Muskegon stepped forward and built a lovely recreational trail that shows the beauty of this city and of this county along Muskegon Lake. And is it Daryl and Kathleen Straley were kind enough from their charity fund to put out a challenge to the Muskegon community of up to $25,000 for a maintenance fund. They'll take $20,000, they'll take 15,000, they'll take 10,000, they'll take 5,000. If you and your children, your family, your grandchildren enjoy that recreational trail, walking it, look at all of the nonprofits from, throughout this community that use that trail to help raise money for their missions. Would you please consider sending a check, going to the Community Foundation website, you can use a credit card, for the Love Our Lake Shore Trail, so that trail can continue to be the asset that it has turned out to be for this community. I didn't have a lot to do with that. Most of us up here, I think Commissioner Spataro's the only one up that was part of that besides staff, but it's probably one of the most important things that have happened in this community in a long time. Everybody has an opportunity to go for a nice ride or walk along the lake shore. So I want to, on behalf of myself, on behalf of the city commission, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Muskegon and throughout Muskegon County, thank the Community Foundation for the work and the leadership that they do in this community. We've had our differences of opinion sometimes on things that have happened, but the matter, the fact is, is that we both work towards the same thing, and that's to make this a better community. So Chris, I'm glad you're here. Bob, you're here. Trip, to your father, please pass on. We appreciate all of the work that you've done, and may you have continued success in making this a better community than we already are. Thank you. You clap now, but that could be the first of many talks. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the June 11th commission work session meeting and the June 12th city commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Human resources agreement, city manager, summary request, to renew the agreement with county of Muskegon to provide human resource services to the city from July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. Staff recommendation, to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Approval of realtor for community and neighborhood services, summary request, to approve green ridge realty to be used by the city of Muskegon in the sale of CNS properties. CNS received three bids. Staff recommendation, to approve green ridge realty for the community and neighborhood services office. Liquor license request from Muskegon Country Club, city clerk, summary request, the liquor control commission is seeking local recommendation on request from Muskegon County Club, 2801 Lake Shore Drive, to transfer ownership of a Class C license from Carbon Knight LLC, 760 West Broadway Norton Shores, to the Muskegon Country Club. Staff recommendation, all departments are recommending approval. Mueller CL-12 Water Main Tapping Machine Repair, Public Works, summary request, authorize staff to purchase repair services from the original equipment manufacturer, Mueller Company of Decatur, Illinois, to rebuild and recondition our Mueller CL-12 Water Main Tapping Machine. Staff recommendation, approved purchase. Purchase of GPS units, Public Works, summary request, authorize staff to purchase between 40 and 50 GPS units from Network Fleet to be installed on a number of city-owned vehicle trucks operated by DPW and other departments. The proposal calls for the city to trade in the shadow tracker units the city owns at this time and invest up to $26,000, budgeted in the 2012, 2013, for the proposed units which would be used at minimum to track trips, idling, and required vehicle maintenance. The recommendation to purchase from Network Fleet is the result of evaluating various other products, fleet matics, and having Network Fleet's product for the last six months and found them to be exactly what we need in addition to submitting the lowest price. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Network Fleet to purchase the GPS units and the annual subscription fee for an additional two years. Consideration of bids for S661 Evanston Lift Station Rehabilitation Engineering, summary request, award the Evanston Lift Station Rehabilitation Project S661 to Jackson Merkey out of Muskegon, Michigan, since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid price of $193,585. Staff recommendation, award the contract to Jackson Merkey. Gaming license request from RED's Youth Center Restoration Restore a Generation, city clerk, summary request, RED's Youth Center Restoration Restore a Generation, 1855 Pex Street, Muskegon, is requesting a resolution recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating in the city for the purposes of obtaining a gaming license. They have been recognized as a 501(c)(3) organization by the state. Staff recommendation, approval. Consideration of bids for Hackley Avenue Glen to Hudson Water Main Replacement Engineering, summary request, award the project to Jackson Merkey, who submitted the preliminary bid of $642,662.45. Staff recommendation, award the contract to Jackson Merkey.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Item H for me, please. Vice Mayor Galorin?
I'll ask you this for the last time. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, minus item H.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galorin, I'll be saying that for darn near the last time, and Commissioner Waringo, to approve the consent agenda as read, less item H. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galorin?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the gaming license request from RED's Youth Center Restoration Restore a Generation, as they have been recognized as a 501(c)(3) organization by the state.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Galorin, to approve the gaming license request from RED's Youth Center Restoration Restore a Generation. I'm asking staff, have we had anyone call to complain or disagree with this?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galorin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Request for final planned unit development approval for 372 Morris Avenue, planning economic development. Summary request, the request for preliminary and final planned unit development, PUD, approval at 372 Morris Avenue for a mixed-use development. The request is by Bob Dykstra, Urban Renaissance Group LLC. Staff recommendation, staff recommends final approval of the PUD, provided that the conditions listed in the resolution are met. Committee recommendation, the planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary PUD and the final PUD for the conditions listed on the resolution at their June 14th, 2012 meeting. The vote was unanimous with T. Mahalsky and W. Park Abson.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. So we may begin discussion. I would move that we approve the request for final planned unit development approval for 372 Morris Avenue.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Hood, to approve the request for a final planned unit development approval for 372 Morris Avenue. Mr. Francis?
I would just like to mention that the plans were approved with the condition that each phase goes back to Planning Commission once the project is started. And we do have Bob Dykstra from the Urban Renaissance Group here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Spataro, could you amend your motion to request for the preliminary and final planned unit development?
I so amend.
And would you amend your second, Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or Vice Mayor Galorin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission meeting. My one concern that came up was during the presentation on the final plans, things seemed to be a little conceptual and scant. As far as Planning Commission members and staff are concerned with these buildings, with these additional approvals and stages, do you feel that we're protected as we monitor the project as it goes forward?
That was one of the concerns at the meeting. Generally, these final plans usually are just kind of an outline of the final project, and they often do change. That's why the condition was put in, that they would have to come back for approval once the first phase starts.
Okay. Commissioner Spataro?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it's not just for site plan approval, but the motion we made at the Planning Commission was also that those site plans would be an amendment of the planned unit development. The reason that's significant is that, that means that's a public hearing, so there would be notice given out, people have an opportunity to be aware and participate, and it would come to the city commission for final action. So there are safeguards built in place to ensure that this is a development that everybody could be comfortable with, based on how it was approved at the Planning Commission level. So this isn't the final time the city commission would see this.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes, I have a number of questions. I don't know if Mike can answer them, or the gentleman from Urban Renaissance Group. I love phases two, three, and four. Phase one, I have a problem with. I have some reservations about that. It's the utility storage units that are moved in, recycled shipping containers. And looking up the sizes of those, 100, where's the number that I had here, 20 by 80, 160 square feet is a standard-sized unit. Many of the units that I have looked at through the web and places where they have been installed, there's not enough room for retail inside of those units, and they're being serviced by a lift-up window and going to a window and being serviced. And I don't think that's very good for the city of Muskegon, because we don't have that long time of the period where people shop outside and go up to counters and be waited on. That's a question that I have, if that's not a, if that's the right amount or size for these units. How many units, it's phase one is where these container units are coming in. That's going to come first. The more permanent structures are going to come in phases two, three, and four. The numbers I find very interesting, that is quoted as daily traffic, 2,000 to 2,500 people coming in here each day to shop in that area. That's optimistic. I hope that's a good number. That would be great if it was. The units themselves will be leased by the tenants, and there will be one person company that owns the entire property. Is that correct? Maybe I'm going too fast. I'm asking questions.
Mr. Dykstra? Why don't you step up?
Bob Dykstra from our Urban Renaissance Group. So, which question would you like me to answer first?
The standard size of the unit. Let's start there.
Standard size of the unit, we'll have some units that will be 3,000, 4,000 square feet. A container is eight feet by 20 or 40.
So these are joined together?
Then they'll be joined together. I didn't anticipate that question, but we have some that are two stories.
I've seen those, yes.
So it's, what we're really trying to do, again, is attract smaller users, make it really affordable to get them downtown, especially with the food concept. We think Nicholas Micah from Intermodal is here, too, and they've been doing a lot of work in marketing this in other cities, too. But Nick, the average size would probably be about 600 square feet, do you think? And then we'll have some small artisan shops that will be the 120 or 300, excuse me, 160 or 320.
Will customers be able to go in those units?
Oh, yeah. It will be just like the typical shopping center.
Now, will these units be brought to their location and then cut and ready, painted, and floors put in and everything onsite?
Don't know the answer to that, probably. We'll either assemble them at a central location and bring them here, or do them right onsite, more than likely right onsite. We'll be putting full utilities to the project. We have to meet all standard building codes, because it's semi-permanent, it's not temporary.
Within, well, I guess that comes later on in proposals two, three, and four.
Yeah, here's an example of a Starbucks. And that'll give you an idea how nice the interior is to be.
I think that one is the Starbucks, right?
Yes.
That looks great. Some of the others I have seen do not look so great.
It's all on the execution.
The only concern I have is it's very much out of character, the downtown Muskegon area, and they look temporary to me. I have great reservation about that.
Again, I think we can show you plenty of examples of permanent, that it's a really unique architecture, and you dress them up. If you just put a plain container, yeah, they're not going to look very good at all. Who's going to want to come downtown for a plain container? We have to make it interesting, we have to make it exciting. You know, the Community Foundation had a study done about this site, and one of the biggest things in the site is we had to do something new and something interesting to attract people to come downtown, and that's what this does.
It's new and it's interesting. It's just, I just have that feeling of temporary in nature.
Yeah. And, you know, we label that as phase one, but we hope to be building some of the apartments at the same time.
And they are all construction-type?
Traditional, yes.
Not the container units. I understand, container units have become very popular and very available, because so many come to our country, and they don't go, they don't want to send them back empty, so they are available.
Yeah, again, when you look at a container, we're only going to save about 25% from traditional construction. It's a great shell. Now, you're, and you can build them fairly quickly and put them in quickly. That's where you save the money. But when you start building them out, again, like the inside and what people want, we put in the same insulation, we put in heaters, you're going to spend the same amount of money on your interior build-out than you will spend the same amount of money on utilities and landscaping. So it's really the fact that we can build them quickly and install them quickly. That saves costs. And to get people downtown, we have to offer something really competitive. We can't build a brand-new building, and nobody wants to be first and pay $20 a square foot and not know it's going to work.
In the write-up is mentioned market rates, rates, rent. Do you have any kind of idea what kind of range you'd mention $20 a square foot?
Well, some of these people will pay, some of the artists will pay $150 a month. Some of the smaller shops, we've got a butcher that's interested in coming down and a baker, they're going to range between $500 and $750 a month. The real big thing is, we won't have to make them sign a five-year lease or a 10-year lease. With some of the incentives that we're going to get from the state, and again, some help from the Community Foundation with the lower-interest land lease, we're going to be able to offer very affordable rents, so that we can get more people to move here at once. That's the real key.
Do you have any potential renters right now?
Yeah. Nick, you want to?
We do, but it's not ready to be announced yet, I don't think, just because this isn't official. Maybe after tonight.
Like I said, some of these are beautiful, and some of them scare me. I've seen a lot on the web and looking at it.
It's understandable, some of them scare me, too, so.
And I just don't know if that's the look we want in downtown Muskegon.
You know, you have to look at it. We've got investors that want to get a return on investment. We're not going to do anything we consider really foolish. You know, it's kind of... You know, it's got to make sense. Otherwise, we won't get it built.
Return on investment can be interpreted a number of ways. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Spataro?
Well, seeing no other questions, I... Since I was very vocal, it wasn't on TV, but it was a public meeting and a goal-setting session, and being rather dismissive of this type of architecture. You know, I've done a lot of research since then. I've kicked the tires, and I've kind of changed my mind. And I want to explain kind of where I'm coming from on this. Right now in downtown Muskegon, we have a shortage of retail buildings. And people will tell you, oh, we've got empty buildings. We do. But you can count on the fingers of one hand, maybe one hand and one finger, the number of storefronts where you could go in rather inexpensively and set up shops. Not pointing fingers, but the reality is, is our predecessors and good-meaning folks in this community over the last 40 years tore most of them down. So also being on the Downtown Muskegon Now! board, I can tell you firsthand the frustration we've run into with small retailers trying to find them a home in downtown Muskegon. Now, the problem is, is that it doesn't cost you any less to build in downtown Muskegon than it does at Harvey and Sternberg. And so if you're the developer who's going to build that building, you're expecting rents that are going to make you a profit. Our market isn't mature enough in retail to support that yet. So we've got a real dilemma on our hands as far as having a shortage of space available that is below the cost of what you see on Apple Avenue or at Harvey and Sternberg for those small, local proprietors who are looking for space and who want to be downtown because they see what's happening down here. So I think this fills that need very well. And I think this gives us an opportunity to fill the gap between the entrepreneurial startups that are in incubator space like the Century Club and folks who have enough budget to go and renovate, say... I know it's on here later today about the old Mack building. And do something like that. We need something in between that we don't currently have. The other thing about this that I was very pleased to see is, right now, if you're a young professional, and young professionals want to live in city centers. I mean, that's what the Census Bureau shows. That's anecdotally what we hear. That's what you see. If you want to go rent an apartment in downtown Muskegon, where do you go? There isn't it. You can rent some houses near downtown. The closest market-rate units are in the Hamilton House, which is about five blocks away from West Avenue, five, six blocks south. So we have a real shortage of market-rate rental units that are apartments for people who are looking. And now, I've talked to the folks at the artworks, and they'll tell you that they could fill up twice over every year for folks who make too much money. Because they have... Just like the Amazon, they have income limitations on who can rent there. So to me, this proposal, not only does it meet the urban design that we've been looking for that came out of the Imagine Muskegon process, but it fills two glaring gaps that we currently have in the economic redevelopment puzzle in downtown Muskegon. Market-rate rental apartments and that mid-range of retail units that the startups need that are bigger than just the incubator space. So that's where I've turned around on this, and that's why I supported this in the planning commission, and that's why I'll be supporting this tonight. And quite honestly, I hope the developer's able to pull it off. You know, this is one of those things that gets kind of people excited, and, you know, that doesn't always work out. But I certainly hope this is a development. That's not the case, and then the financing comes through and it gets done. I think it'll be a real asset to the community.
Thank you, Renner. Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments?
I'd just like to say, you know, on the...
Commissioner Turquess?
Rent is... And the sale of a house is location, location, location. Downtown is, should be, a prime location. And if we're going to go in with a bunch of low-rental retail fronts, apartments and so forth, that's where the city downtown will go. That's what you want, so be it. I don't agree with that, and I'll be voting against this tonight.
Commissioner?
Yes, my question is, in comparisons where you're bringing this innovation here to Muskegon, could you give us insight of other cities or states that's actually doing this and being successful with their development as well?
Yeah, of course. And it's not just shipping containers. We just would like to use...
I need you to give your name and address, please.
Nicholas Micah, Grand Rapids. So, yeah, so some of the developments that are happening around the world right now that are using these shipping containers are using them as a way to revive an area that has been affected by some sort of economic decline, right? Because they are low-cost, a low-risk solution to do so. New Zealand is one, Brooklyn, New York. There's one in Toronto, London. There was one in Long Beach, I believe, as well. So... But there's a variety of other types of applications as well that don't, say, involve shipping containers, involve other types of structures.
And has that boosted the economy in any way? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, I don't know those exact studies, but if you can imagine that providing some sort of a solution like that to get businesses started has a big impact, especially when you're trying to build a retail.
And your plans to further continue this further as development? If this goes well, do you have plans to, like, expand and other sites that you're looking at? Or that...
Yeah, not particularly for this development. What we'd really like to see happen is some of these tenants that we incubate in this space can move into more permanent buildings, say, along Western Avenue. That would be our dream.
Commissioner?
Excuse me. You said... You stated that you have more than just shipping contain... More than just the shipping boxes.
Yeah.
Is that what's in mind for Muskegon, or what else do you have?
Just to show you on the rest of the development, again, since you weren't part of the study before, here, this is in total about an eight-acre site, and we just recently completed a building that Social Security Services will be moving into. So then, right on Morris Street on the front, we're actually going to be building, as part of this development, a traditional office-retail building. This will have retail on the lower level, offices up above. Standard construction, brick to match kind of what we did with Social Security. So very traditional, fun structure. It's, you know, a little more contemporary architecture, but with brick. So those two buildings will front on Morris Avenue. Then, over here, we're going to have some townhouses. And again, I don't think they'll be all brick, but a combination of brick and some metal to kind of mirror what we're doing here. And then overlooking Lake Shore Drive and with views of the lake, we'll have two-story apartments. One of the problems with this site, again, it is a brownfield, and that's why the containers work so well because we don't have to build deep footings and penetrate that brownfield cap. So there's very limited uses that you really can put on this site. And it's a great location, you know, visible from Lake Shore. So it's got all the amenities that we really need. And then even with our container construction, we're going to put some... Use conventional steel to help support some of it. We're going to put some awning structures. And so it will be a little mixture of containers and traditional construction as part of that, too. You don't see it on the site, but there's about a five-foot grade change. So we're going to have different levels. There's going to be a fire pit out here. We're going to heat a lot of this in the winter, like a ski resort, where you can walk around and have propane heat heated up. So it's going to be like a European market, something that somebody should want to come to again year-round.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Greg, could... I've been told that the audience would like to see the...
Oh, yeah. They'd like to probably have it turned around.
The boards, and maybe if we could position them so they could get them on camera?
Sure.
Thank you.
You recently had an experience in Grand Rapids with a cargo-type unit storage. Did I read that in one? Is it still in use, or was it for a special occasion? And what's happening there?
It was just for a special occasion, actually. The Tedx Grand Rapids Conference there. We bought it to experiment.
Can I step up to the microphone, please?
So we purchased one to kind of play with it, to test, to see what could be done with them. So we bought a brand-new one. And this is... We kind of created this pop-up park as part of the Tedx Grand Rapids Conference, and this was a coffee shop. That was done there. As you can see, it looks really nice. This is one of them where it was served out of, though, so it had a serving window. All of these in the marketplace are... We will not have that, obviously, if we have to walk in. It's fun. You might bring it here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Croft? Joshua Croft?
Hello.
Be free to give your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Joshua Croft, and I live at 2135 Latart. I just had a couple of questions and concerns about the development. You know, first, I'd like to say that upon hearing about this development, I was very excited, actually, because it sounds like it will really be a catalyst for some pretty interesting developments within the city. You know... Sorry. I recently moved back here after graduating from MSU with a degree in urban and regional planning. This is my hometown, and I want to see good things happen here. So when I, you know, hear about the developments as the company is proposing, it's very exciting to me. However, I do have a few reservations that I kind of wanted to bring up tonight. One of my main questions or maybe concerns was in regards to the proposed office space. You know, as I look around downtown, and I work in an office building downtown, it's about 50% vacant. I wonder to myself whether or not the office aspects of this development will really fly. I also know that the Huntington Bank Building is about 40% occupied, so there is some significant space available already for prospective businesses to come in and revitalize those spaces rather than maybe utilizing some new office space on this site. You know, however, there may be, you know, some demand that I, you know, don't know about that may be revealed after the PUD is approved. Another one of my concerns was in regards to the residential aspects of the site. You know, I think, as Commissioner Spataro pointed out, that the downtown does lack market-rate apartments, and that would be a welcomed addition to the downtown. As, you know, in my search for property in the downtown, I've been hard-pressed to find anything that I can actually buy into, and saying that my income is too high is kind of funny. So it would be a welcomed addition to have these market-rate apartments in the downtown. However, I do question the validity of the proposed condos, whether or not those will go. You know, there are several condo developments that have been slated for downtown, ones that I have thought have been particularly aesthetically pleasing and have yet to be built out to their full potential. And so I would urge us to maybe place, you know, place emphasis on making sure those developments go first before we move forward with more residential development on this particular site. And my final question or concern was in regards to the site design. And upon coming into this meeting, kind of found out a little bit more about why the site was... Or the Social Security building was designed in the way that it was. But as the same developer will be developing this new project, you know, I have concerns about the pedestrian friendliness of this particular development and hope that it includes the appropriate pedestrian facilities and that it is, you know, oriented, you know, towards our city and not inwards towards the site. And I do appreciate that it is a European development. But I think that, you know, that they should definitely consider it being accessible from our streets, as a Social Security building does not have an entrance on the street, which I hear is because of a homeland security issue. However, I do not think that the large transformer out front necessarily needed to be on our city-facing street. So those were my main concerns, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Hello, my name is Dylan Hock. I live at 219 Harrison Avenue. I'm very excited about this project, and I just wanted to talk about the aesthetics and some of the apprehension that Commissioner Turquess has. I think, you know, as I think Commissioner Spataro said, it's all about how you execute it. It's all about how we put these together. The raw material is this shipping crate. I've seen this in many communities. They look fabulous. They look green. They fit very well with our railroad, our rail line, Red Cross Street, and our docks and our shipping, our history as a town. I think these fit in really well, actually. I'm excited about it. I didn't know about the heating element in the winter. That's a great perk there as well. And I agree with everything Commissioner Spataro said. I mean, we really need this. It's a great compromise. It's an affordable way for people to try to start business, and we really need that around here. And I don't know about the office space. Perhaps that would be more affordable as well. That would be fabulous. I've heard of collectives, like a writers' collective in Grand Rapids, who all rented a house, and they use this place as a place to go and do their writing away from distractions at home. And they all went on it together. And, you know, Muskegon can do things like that as well, especially if the office space is a little more affordable. People can come up with creative solutions to possibly fill those spaces. I'd hate to see this fall through for that reason. But anyway, I'm excited. I keep my fingers crossed that this will happen. Thanks for your time.
Any other comments? Need your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Bennett. I live at 1538 White Pine Court. I'm not here today to talk about downtown development or aesthetics because I know absolutely anything about either. And as my wife will inform you, I'm not even hip with today's style. What I do know is construction. I'm a local construction worker, and I've been born and raised in Muskegon. And I have some concerns about the construction of this project and these future projects being outsourced to Grand Rapids contractors. The recent Social Security building that was built near this property was built almost exclusively by Grand Rapids contractors. Now, that is a facility that will be utilized and eventually paid for by Muskegon taxpayers. So as we go forward with these kind of construction projects, I hope we place emphasis on making sure that we employ as many Muskegon people as possible when we look into these developments because it's going to take a lot of us in the strong-consuming middle class in Muskegon County if we're going to get any development off... Up onto its feet in downtown. So thank you for your time, and... Have a good evening.
Any other comments?
My name is Barbara Sashow, and I own the Port City Bed in Barfust. First of all, I was always disappointed when we tore down our downtown, tore down the old buildings. I'm the one that preserved an old building because I own the Port City Bed in Barfust. I don't think you would feel good if I put a trailer on Lake Shore Drive. I think it's a bad idea to put those containers. I think they're... You'll only be saving, what, 25%? I think it's a bad investment, myself. I was disappointed when I seen the security office downtown, which I thought there was nothing wrong with the security building down on Barclay and Sherman. You took up our lakefront again with views, which I felt that you should have put the shops down there with views of our lake, and now that's gone. I don't think we want shops down by our Social Security building. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gollwens?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
No.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You? Adam B., please.
Charter amendments regarding millage cap and senior transit millage. City manager, summary request to approve a charter amendment to set a specific millage rate limit and a charter amendment for a senior transit millage. Staff recommendations, these amendments are provided pursuant to direction from the city commission at their meeting on June 12, 2012. commission at their meeting on June 12, 2012.
Commissioner Turner.
I have one question. How much in dollars will this generate?
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to make the motion?
Support.
Would you like to make the motion?
No.
Commissioners.
Well, seeing nobody else is willing to do this, I would move that we approve the charter amendments regarding the millage cap and senior transit millage using the revised documents that we received and approved or placed them on the November ballot.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo to approve charter amendments regarding the millage cap and senior transit millage. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Turner.
How much dollars would this generate?
It will vary from year to year, but currently we project about $60,000.
$60,000.
Any other questions?
Before we do, just, just one statement. I know there's a lot of folks here on this item and the next item, and I just want to say that it's important for people who want to maintain this program, here's your opportunity to make sure all your friends and family show up in November to vote for this. Because if they don't, there won't be any money to pay for it. So, you know, we've, we've done our best to try to come up with a way to find money, given our financial reality going forward, to sustain this important program. And I do think it's important. I know it makes a huge difference in the quality of life of a lot of our citizens. But we need you to step up now and not only vote for it yourself, but make sure your friends and families and neighbors are understanding that this is for you and that their cost would be very, very minimal to cover this. What, what would be the anticipated cost for, I believe it was what, $2,050 for a house assessed at $50,000?
That's something.
Yeah. So, I mean, basically for two, three dollars a year, your neighbors can make sure that you are able to have the mobility that makes your life much more enjoyable than it would be otherwise. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments?
I guess my question is, looking at that this service will continue throughout to December of this year and looking to next year with the budget, is there any possible way that we can possibly get past the millage if this is, if this is voted down and then there's fund available where they don't have to, where the services could still be provided? Or is there projects that we could look at and that say, well, hey, this could wait and continue to keep the services for the senior citizens? My take on this is that we've provided the services for a while and I think the senior citizens actually look forward to the city of Muskegon as being leaders and providing this service to them to continue it and to come up with creative ways to, to, to give them the service that, you know, we once gave them. And I think that not just really, you know, trying to use every aspect, every option possible, have we looked at every option possible to try to continue this service for these senior citizens without going to the millage?
I would suggest that this was a discussion that we had during the budget. It's a discussion that can come up at any time if the commission so desires to do something more of this life. However, then your decision is where are you going to take the money from? The city staff has gone through and looked at all the options. They present to the city commission the options that are there. If, if there's a, if you talk about creative ways, then I would suggest that our staff doesn't have the time to do creative ways unless they're given the direction to do that amongst other things. So it's up to us then as elected community leaders, if we see the need to do something, to reach out and begin to do it ourselves. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. You know, I, I understand where you're coming from. I feel the same way about this program. But the harsh reality is in our budget forecast. We, we know that we're in a, you know, our budget we passed has an operational deficit. We know what's happening with the B.C. Cob Plant and what that's going to do to our revenue. We know whether it's this year or next year, the state legislature is going to cut personal property tax, which is another 18% of our budget. And I have absolutely no faith that they will replace that money over the long term because they're all term limited out. They can make us a promise, but they're all going to be gone in, in a couple, couple terms in most cases. And what's a new legislature going to do? So these are the painful choices that they leave for us to make at the local level because this was not funded with local dollars. So I don't want to do this. I really don't. Hopefully this community will step up and support our seniors to the tune of two or three dollars a year for the typical Muskegon homeowner and we'll be able to continue this program with solid local financial funding going forward. And that's why I think this is the best way to go because we're going to be cutting a whole lot more than this over the next couple of years, the way things are looking.
Mr. Waringo?
I agree with Commissioner Spataro. I also think we need to realize that we have to sell this to the public. It's going to be hard work and it's incumbent on all of us to do part of that. And I just want to be sure we understand that.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner German? Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Adam C., please.
Senior Transit Funding, City Manager. Summary request to continue the senior transit program from July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012, under the following terms and funding requirements. Raise the rate per ride from $1.50 to $3. Fill the remaining funding gap by utilizing unanticipated savings in the streets and lighting budget. Continue the five-day-per-week operation. Staff recommendation, to approve the proposed terms and funding for the senior transit program for July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the proposed terms and funding for senior transit programming from July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the senior transit funding from July 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012.
Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
I know we talked about different fundraisings, raising the fund from a dollar and a half, two dollars, two fifty and three, and I don't see that we've gone to three dollars. You feel it's necessary to double it, increase it 100%? A dollar or two to a senior citizen on fixed income psychologically and realistically can be a lot. Work with senior transportation in Red Cross, which is a, done on a donation type of basis and many of the people that we drive there don't give, don't want to give or can't give. So I, I don't know what the right answer is, but you feel it's necessary to go to double it?
I think that's a reasonable amount. We, I provided the city commission with what our true costs are and as you know, they're significantly higher than that, more than three times that cost. And we're also providing the, under this proposal, providing the cost for the gap in, in cost, you know, it's going to cost money over and above what we're going to charge for the remaining six months and we're proposing that the city pick up that cost, if you will. And then the other thing that we also talked about at the last meeting was the possibility of curtailing the number of days that the services provided, maybe going back to two, maybe going to two or three days. But my proposal keeps it at five days. So I think in that context, I think the proposal overall is reasonable.
Thank you.
Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, you issued a challenge to all of us and to me in particular. The challenge to all of us was to try to think creatively of ways to fund senior transit. And to me in particular is, was to take this to Norton Shores and also to the county. I've done both of those things. I took it to Norton Shores last week and I took it to the county today. What I came up with doing a little research is a program called ITN, Independent Transportation Network, which could be a possible model for future senior transit, not only in Muskegon City, but in the whole county. It began in Portland, Maine and now has about 20 affiliates around the country. The closest ones to here are in Racine County, Wisconsin, Chicago and Detroit. Their website is itnamerica.org. They do provide technical assistance in getting a program set up. One of the ways they save money is to institute a public-private partnership in those places. And they make use of trained volunteer drivers, mostly people in their 50s and 60s who are not paid money, but they do earn points from their work, which they can use later on when they become too old to drive themselves. They can use them to get rides. And that's basically the model and it is one way of saving money and I would urge you to consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I get your name and address, please?
1495 Westwood Circle. In what choice?
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I, I have to have you come up because it's a public meeting.
Everybody's room for you, Aaron.
I live at 1350 West Hackley Avenue, Muskegon, Michigan. I don't understand, you raised it from a dollar and a half one way to, and the other, and it's three dollars for round trip. Now, you mean you're going to pay three dollars one way and six dollars round trip?
Yes.
I don't know how that's going to work with some, I would let, I wish we could come up with a way for people of lower income to not have to pay that much. Of the people that we got to sign our petition, they could come up with five dollars or six dollars, but some people in other neighborhoods, I don't think they could. I don't think they can handle three to six dollars for a round trip. The rest of it sounds great, but I question that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mark Evans, 1899 Barnes Road. As you look at imaginative ways to, to fund the program, I don't know if municipalities are eligible, but for Medicaid riders, there is a reimbursement of 29 cents per mile through the DA, Department of Human Services. Whether you're eligible or not for that, I don't know, but it might be something to look into.
Thank you.
Dorothy Davich and I live at the Park Terrace also, 1350 West Hackley. If you are going to pass the six dollar round trip, will that be rescinded if the millage goes through? Will it go back to the other price or will it stay at six dollars round trip? Or do you know yet?
Well, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it's my understanding that this is from, for the rest of the year, this year.
Yes.
And what's going to happen next year, we're not sure.
You still don't know?
Well, if the millage passes. That's one thing.
That would make a difference.
Doesn't afford it funding.
Okay.
You have to get all your friends to vote.
Well, yes, that's what we saw. We've got to get everybody else to vote.
That would be a discussion that will need to be taken up at that time.
Okay.
But the most important thing is to get it to pass or there won't be any reason to have any discussion.
Yes. Thank you for all your work. I know you understand us, where we're coming from. Thank you.
Mr. Olachurch.
And I'm also speaking for Nelson Community Association. I'm happy to hear tonight that at least you're trying some way or other to address this problem. It is a big problem. There are hundreds and hundreds of seniors in my neighborhood over here and we really don't have any way to, how shall I put this, to really take care of these needs for these people. I had an interesting conversation a while back, a couple Wednesdays ago here with the people from Matt's and my understanding was that they couldn't really do too much for a lot of the seniors because they don't have the right facilities and then there's also an issue there with their funding. They get their funding from the transportation department, I guess. And so they have to, they have other guidelines that they have to go to. And we were talking about trying to get them to set up some kind of a van perhaps of some sort and maybe they could use to transport people. I think another concern of having here, I'm listening to this thing here about the three dollar rate on this. I know you're going to have a funding problem with all this, but I'll tell you this, people that use this service, use it not just once in a while, they probably use it at least once a week. You make a round trip to the grocery. You might make some additional trips to the doctors, the hospital, God knows where. And that's an additional three dollars a week just for the one trip. That's about $150 a year. And a lot of seniors just don't have the money. So I know you got your problems here, they have problems too. Somehow you're going to have to get together here and figure out some way to do this a little better. I'm glad that you're going to go into some kind of a millage proposal here. The problem with the millage proposal though is that people today are just not too happy about increasing taxes no matter what. And I wish you luck. I hope it goes through. I just wonder what kind of, of what kind of support the city is going to give to the campaign or to get people to come out and vote for it. Also, I think you should have this specific millage targeted just, just for this program so that some future years, you don't get the temptation here to take some of that money and use it for something else. It's just like the police department. I think when we had that, it was targeted, that extra mill just for the police.
Keep on the point, Mr. Olachurch, please. We're talking about senior transit, we're not about the police department, please.
Well, I just bring that up as an extra point there.
Well, just to clarify, this millage proposal is specific for this purpose only?
Targeted just for this.
Just for this.
Okay.
That's why it's being proposed this way.
Well, that's all I got to say about it. I hope, I hope it goes through. I'm glad you're doing something. I'm glad you're doing something with it. I would think, though, that you should, instead of asking for a $3 rate, maybe you should at least try and be competitive with the bus system, which offers go-buses at $2. And I know you've got a rainy day fund. Folks, it's raining out there now. This is time to spend it.
In two years, Mr. Olachek, it's going to be porn. It's going to be a tsunami.
I imagine. All right, well, I'm glad you're going back to the five-day-a-week operation, because, again, like I mentioned last time, that people have to make their appointments with doctors and so forth, and you can't always do it on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or whatever days you want. And it's going to have to be adjustable, so a five-day operation is what you need. Got to try and get that rate redo somehow. If the rate...if the millage goes through, you should be getting more money coming in. And I would imagine that you should come back to the community development, Blanque Grant people, and put some money in for that, or put a request there for additional funding if you run low on it. I don't really understand why the seniors are being targeted here to make up the difference over here. I mean, the whole thing is, you're spending money for commercial facade improvement. I don't even know who's getting that money. I'm looking at general administration, $140,000.
Mr. Olachek, I would suggest to you that seniors aren't being targeted. There would be people in the community who would say that the other residents are being targeted that don't use the service and are subsidizing it.
Well, perhaps. I guess you got a point there. But seniors also pay taxes. I mean, we've got to write the services, too, and we don't ask for much. We don't use the school system. The school taxes are way up there. I know you have to pay them. But hey, I think we can do this a little better, that's all.
Make sure that you get out and vote, and let the folks in your Nelson community...
Because I'm just hoping that the city of the city will do something to get people out. I mean, this is where it starts.
And one of the things you can do is call your friends and family, make sure they get out and vote.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item?
So, once again, my name's Dylan Hock from 2019 Harrison Avenue. I've seen in the newspaper a lot lately, asking about what we can do to pull Muskegon together, and I feel like I've really seen it on this issue. I've seen the commission look for and struggle with creative solutions. I've seen citizens doing the same. I think it's really wonderful, and it's something...it's one of the best things I've seen since I've been coming to these commission meetings for a number of months now. And so I wanted to thank everyone for that, and say this is more of what we need, to be involved in coming together, putting our heads together respectfully, to come up with creative solutions. And I know that I would be happy to pay an additional amount to keep this going. I would pay for the millage, I'll vote for it. It's a cup of coffee. It's less than a tank of gas. Let's keep perspective. And over a whole year, I don't want to pay any more taxes either, but it's so little. I go out to eat, I don't know how many times a year, I can skip a night, you know? So I think we need...owe it to our seniors. It's so little money. I hope this passes. Thank you.
So do we. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Goren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now our work begins, ladies and gentlemen, to get this passed. I will be campaigning my word to get this passed. Item D, please.
DDA on-premise liquor license for Nemesis Incorporated Planning Economic Development Summary Request to approve the resolution approving a downtown development authority on-premise liquor license for Nemesis Incorporated at 333 West Western Avenue. The Liquor Control Code allows for additional liquor licenses within downtown development authority districts under certain conditions. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood, thank you.
I move to approve the on-premise liquor license for Nemesis Incorporated.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the DDA on-premise liquor license for Nemesis Incorporated. Is there any discussion?
Just is the proposed licensee here, and do they want to share with us what their plans are?
Is Mike here? No. There's a representative here, but Mr. Hennessy is not here.
Oh, good. Well, I mean, if they want to present, just want to get...
Mr. Champagne, why don't you step up here for a moment? We need your name and address, zip code.
For you, I'll actually give my real address. Donald Champagne, 12296 Lakeshore Drive, Grand Haven, 19417.
Right Street, wrong zip code.
Thank you for the opportunity. At this point, the concept is in a kind of a dynamic process. We're just trying to find out if we can actually get support for the DDA license before we actually move forward completely. Investing a lot of money in a concept for a restaurant is not in the best use of the resources if we're not going to get a DDA license. So I can tell you, that is Mike and Nancy Hennessy. They operate Hennessys downtown. You'll get a similar feel for the restaurant, but it'll definitely be a different cuisine.
Right. Mr. Champagne, I'm assuming that you looked at other liquor licenses that are available, and there's no liquor license that's transferable to the...
Absolutely. Actually, we're in the process of transferring the two, only other two other licenses that were available in the area, so there was nothing available. We did pursue one that we were unable to secure. Quite often, the licenses that are available are tied to a specific property. They want to sell them together. Every once in a while, you're able to split that. If we could, we would bring one in from another community, or move one from another location. And we'll pursue that. We have to do that twice with a DDA license, once in the beginning and once near the end, so we'll review that again to see if we can find another license that would be available.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, please.
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety. 230 Myrtle, Area 11; 510 Ottawa, Area 11; 450 West Southern, Area 11; and 1290 Wood, Area 11. Summary Request. This is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak on any of these properties? What property would that be?
1290 Wood Street.
Okay. Any other ones?
That's the only one.
Okay, but is there anybody else in the audience?
Behind the poster.
I can't see behind the post. Could you tell me what address, please?
230 Myrtle.
230 Myrtle, thank you. Is there anyone else?
We don't.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you. I move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 510 Ottawa Street and 450 West Southern Avenue.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Goren, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 510 Ottawa and 450 West Southern. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you. I would move, for the purposes of discussion, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' Notice in Order to Demolish 230 Myrtle.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Goren, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 230 Myrtle. Is there someone here to speak on that? I need for you to give your name and address, please.
Walter Clark, 3835 Ellis Road, Muskegon, 1944. I'm the owner of Myrtle, and it burned down, and I'm also unemployed, so I don't have the funds to demolish it myself. I was approached by Habitat for Humanity, who said that they initially said they were interested in the property, and I told them they could have the property if they wanted to demolish the house. There wasn't any counteroffers, you know, and I talked to Cliff about three or four days ago, and he still hasn't heard from his superior at the main office, and I asked him if that was maybe an indication of a lack of interest, and he's come around, said he probably is. And I did offer to give him another property where there wouldn't have to be, over Lakeside, where there wouldn't have to be a demolition if you take them both, and he said he was going to go by and take a look at them, and that was a couple days ago, so I really haven't gotten...I didn't realize that it was a meeting coming up right away until after I had a conversation with him, so I don't think he was rushing over there to look at the property. It's where a bar burnt down, back there behind the Harbor Theater on Harrison, and I was going to give them both properties if they would take them both, but haven't heard back, so...
Mr. Mayor, could we have staff explain the timeframe that would be involved if we concur? Because if we vote yes tonight, it doesn't mean it comes down tomorrow.
Right.
So it gives you some latitude, but...
Sure. Assuming confirmation tonight, property owner would have 21 days to file a writ of superintending control to hold off the demolition, but otherwise, staff will go out for bids and award those. I don't know the timing on sending out for bids, but basically, it's a 21-day time period.
And you have the opportunity to take it down yourself, or somebody else could take it down on your behalf.
No, I don't have the money to pay a contractor right now, but I did contact one, and I didn't get back from him yet. He was thinking, you know, that he's tore down houses for, in the neighborhood of like $4,000, whereas I've heard from Muskegon that they're upwards of $6,000. So I don't know if I...do I have any...could I possibly introduce a demolition contractor? And I'm going to be initially probably billed for it anyways, if the city goes to tear it down. So I'm hoping to maybe get somebody that...make sure I get the lowest bidder.
If the city does it, though, we will select a contractor.
Okay. There wouldn't be any input for me.
But if you had somebody who was very inexpensive, you could go and have that done yourself.
Right.
And, I mean, we don't have to take it down. We've just started that process.
Okay.
So you have a window to take care of it yourself.
Okay.
And if you can do that at much less money, I would encourage you to do that.
Is that like a 21-day window, you say that?
To appeal.
To appeal.
And then it goes out for bid, and so you have a little bit more time than that.
Okay, so if I wanted...I have 21 days to decide if I want to tear it down myself. If I want to appeal to, I got 21-day window to appeal.
Right, 21 days.
That's all I have.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro.
Thanks. Again, for the purposes of discussion, I move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 1290 Wood.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner German, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 1290 Wood. Step forward and give your name and address, please.
Carol Amrin.
Add to Mike, please. And thank you.
1832 Crozier Avenue.
And your name again?
Carol Amrin.
Thank you.
Want to spell it for me? I'm here for two reasons. I sold the premises to a pastor some years ago, and he has since defaulted in payments, but is trying to find someone, in fact, has talked with someone who bought the old Fitzpatrick Building, who may be interested in Martin and Roll Company because it's right on the same premises. The pastor couldn't be here tonight because he is involved in one of his philanthropic operations, I think with whoever it is, I don't know. At any rate, my question would only be if it could be delayed slightly because of the interest that has been shown in possibly buying it before the demolition is carried out by the city. Short time, maybe three, four weeks. I can't guarantee that the party is going to buy it, but he has shown some interest in it. And his reason for...the reason for having it be delayed is that he felt that he could hire his own contractor. Although I like what the city said about finding the lowest bidder.
Pretty much, the information to you would be the same as...
I think so, yes.
...what was up here. It's 21 days.
I hold the mortgage on it, or it's a land contract, so my interest is vested in it too.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would just suggest if we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals, you understand that there's 21 days that you have to appeal, so you may want to get in contact with those folks and let them know how to light a fire under them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Add to Mike, please.
Filling the mayor's vacancy.
Okay, please.
I asked to put this on the agenda so that it would be in front of the City Commission so that you knew the timeframe in which you needed to operate under, and I think you do, but also for you to at least have it in front of you so that you can begin discussing the process that you want to use to fill the vacancy. I think you understand that you have 30 days from the date of the vacancy to fill that vacancy with someone who meets qualifications under the city charter. And your next meeting would be July 10th, and so that would put you a third of the way into that 30 days. So I thought it was...that it made some sense for this item to be placed on your agenda so that you could at least discuss what process you wanted to use, or begin thinking about it.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Does the 30 days begin today?
The 30 days begins at the date of vacancy.
July 1st. Okay, thank you.
That's it? We're just notification, then there'll be discussion? Okay. All right. New business?
Oh, that's the...
Any other business? Any other business? We just finished.
Closed session?
No, not yet. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the commission tonight? Please step up.
While we're waiting for that person to step up, I forgot to talk to Ian. Unless you're all just really desirous to have an extra meeting on the week of the 4th of July holiday, let's cancel the next Communications Committee meeting on Monday and move it to the work session the following Monday.
Do you have to wait?
Anybody have a burning desire to meet on Monday? Cool, we're canceling CRC.
Hello?
You're welcome.
Hi. Jen Osborne, 3125 Tool Street Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I'm here in regards to CJ's on the Beach. Basically, I've come to kind of be proactive and address the commission. Received a letter, and I don't know if any of the commissioners received this letter, Brian, or do they?
No.
Okay. I made copies just so that you could kind of have a reference.
Thank you.
Basically, the letter addresses the deficiencies that we have with our lien lease with the city, which we understand, and we are working on finding someone to purchase the business. I do have several very interested parties right now, but because of the wording in the letter and the timeframe that it appears we are under, I wanted to see where the commission stands... I do have several very interested parties right now, but because of the wording in the letter and the timeframe that it appears we are under, I wanted to see where the commission stands as far as in the letter. At the end of the letter, it states that we have thirty days from the date of the letter to resolve these issues. And realistically, that entire portion is not going to happen. We're not gonna be able to resolve all of those issues by July fifteenth. So my question is, is the commission willing to, if we do have a qualified buyer who is interested and we are in negotiations with a purchase, to get this business back up and going? Is the commission going to be willing to work with us in that regard? You know, understandably, I mean, I'm not asking you to say, oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna give you whatever, you know, but is the commission willing to work with us as far as allowing another qualified party to assume this land lease, provided that all of the deficiencies that are there are taken care of prior to that? Because if that isn't going to happen, then I'm wasting a bunch of people's time by trying to sell a business. So I guess, like I said, I'm trying to be proactive and bring this forward. I'm not really asking a decision right now, but I would ask that this commission consider, you know, the time constraints and whether or not they are willing to, that you would be willing to work with us to try and get this business sold and, you know, back as a functional part of the community rather than sitting there empty.
Commissioner Spataro?
Have you contacted city staff yet in response to this letter?
I actually, I believe it was a day or so after the letter was drafted that I spoke with Brian?
No.
And did, or right around the same timeframe.
So I'm asking, from when you received the letter, have you contacted staff since you received the letter?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Brian was aware that I did have some interested parties and that we were trying to sell the business. His response was that anything that happened would have to go before the commission, which is why when I found out that there was a meeting tonight, I felt it would be appropriate to come to the meeting and make the commission aware that we are trying to do this.
In response to a letter like this, and I understand, obviously, the commission's gonna have to make a final decision, but that's gonna be based on the discussion between you as the less E and the city's the less O. So the thing to do right now is to schedule a time to meet with city staff, work out what you have. If it is a, if it's a valid proposal and it's just short of those timeframes, then, you know, city staff will report to that to us and recommend that we perhaps do an extension. But that discussion needs to take place between you and city staff. The seven of us do not have the technical expertise to negotiate an alternative to this lease. And we rely on city staff to do that. So if you make that arrangements with city staff and have that discussion with them and they feel that this is a legitimate proposal to address the concerns outlined in that letter, I have no doubt we will get a recommendation to take positive action on that. If it's not, then they'll say it's not enough. So before you leave tonight, make sure you make arrangements to meet with Mr. Mize or his designated staff person so that process can begin.
Okay. That's what I was looking for, is a direction of, no, you're wasting your time, just, you know, go, or yes, if we go through the proper channels and not, knowing exactly what those channels regarding the commission and everything were, I will make that appointment and hopefully we will be seeing you soon to ask for approval of a transfer of everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Not to belabor the point, but I think because some statements were made, I think it's important to clarify what has occurred. Ms. Osborne contacted me about the fact that, or at least an indication that she had some prospective buyers that she was talking to and I, but she wanted to know what had to occur in order for the city to approve the liquor license. And we had a discussion over the phone about that and I indicated to her the number of things that had to occur, which included an assignment of the lease, the current lease, and I indicated to her that the City Commission needed to approve that assignment. And I think that's what she is referring to when she indicated that the City Commission needed to give approval. There's other, there's other things that need to occur as well. The things that are spelled out in the letter are all things contained in the lease, so there are not anything that would be of a surprise to Ms. Osborne, or should not be because they're all contained in the lease. We provided the notice as provided or as required by the lease, so all those dates that are included in the letter are provided for in the lease. So I think it's important for you to understand where all those things were derived from.
Thank you. So anyone else who would care to address the commission tonight? I do. I'm, yeah, exactly, my phone's on. As you know, tonight, it was actually Saturday at midnight, and I'll be sleeping Saturday at midnight when that happens unless for some reason there would be a phone call. I'll be ending my tenure as mayor of the city of Muskegon. Ten and a half, absolutely terrific years that I want to say what a privilege it has been to serve the citizens of the city of Muskegon. A lot of people that I need to thank, and this isn't gonna take too long, but I want to go back just a little bit. Today, I want to thank the city for having an open house today for me. I was absolutely amazed at the amount of people that came to wish me well and to thank this commission for the work that's been done in the last ten and a half years. There's a couple of elected officials that are here. Mayor Herb from Montague, Mayor Lumley from Roosevelt Park that are still here, so thank you for staying for this, for this meeting. Former Vice Mayor Bill Larson is here and who, it's a funny thing about when you get involved and you stay around long enough is that you develop good friendships, whether it's city staff. I can't say that I hang out with a lot of city staff because I don't, but you've been around them for a long enough time that you're friends in a different manner and you have a certain love for the fellow people you work with. I attended a retirement last week on Wednesday from our Community Neighborhood and Services Department and it was absolutely amazing. I've done quite a few retirements for the city of Muskegon in my ten and a half years of loyal employees who are leaving to enjoy themselves in retirement. And you could see that just through working together for how many years that, you know, you spend eight hours a day, five days a week. That sometimes is more time with a fellow worker than it is sometimes with your family at home. So you gather those relationships and that's certainly what I've been fortunate enough to be able to do. Eleven years ago, this past, I don't know, sometime in the wintertime, I was approached by a good friend of mine, John Van White, who jokingly walked into the Marine Tap Room, I thought jokingly anyway, and asked me whether I'd have any interest in running as mayor or I forgave exactly how he put it, called me Mayor Wilmington or whatever. And it did pique my interest because I, for one, was like many in this community, I was embarrassed by what was happening in City Hall at that point in time. And shortly after that, two close friends of mine, George Bailey and Lady John Baltima, also approached me. I know Van White could talk to them and said, you know, it'd be good to have somebody with a business background down there. You know, a lot of people will say, you know, a bar owner's not much of a business, but you know, you gotta operate it the same way other businesses do. So I'll shorten it up, certainly I decided that I would run. And I can tell you that what fun it was to run that year. We made a, I don't know, it just seemed like it was a party. There were so many people that got involved. And I think for many of us, it was their first connection getting involved in local politics, to help somebody, to help a friend go for, run for office. And, you know, for many of us that sit up here as elected officials, whether it's here in the City Commission, City Council in Roosevelt Park, Board of Education, Cindy Larson's here from Muskegon Public Schools, you run to make a difference. You don't run to create havoc for most people in the community. We didn't look forward, I can tell you, a few years ago to say, you know, I'm running for office so that we can cut senior transit services to the community. You certainly hope to enhance things. But I want to thank the employees of Marine Tap Room because if they hadn't been who they are, little boy. Little boy. It's gonna be a long night, folks. Yep, I'm doing my best. I used to cry at Lassie. Now you folks in here don't remember Lassie. Between Kimmy and Lassie, I used to cry, so we might get there today. But without their support, oh, jeez.
At least it's Kleenex, it's a sign of tears, not toilet paper, a sign of gas.
But I've had a loyal group of employees over the years that have allowed me the time to get away. Certainly my wife, Tammy, her support. All the commissioners I've worked with. Got two up here that I've been with for ten and a half years. Vice Mayor Galeran, Commissioner Spataro. Vice Mayor Karen Bowie, who was here earlier today, Commissioner Rob Schweifler, Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Davis, Kevin Davis, who passed away. If you ever think about, think about donating an organ, Kevin Davis was a heart transplant, a great commissioner of this community. And he would tell you if he were here today to consider giving to the organ transplant so that you can help save someone like Kevin who's had a longer life. Commissioner Waringo, Commissioner Shepard, Commissioner Steve Wizniewski, and our three newest commissioners, Willie German Junior, Eric Hood, Byron Turnquist. Certainly want to thank the city staff. Brian Mize, Kathy Brubaker-Clark from Planning and Economic Development. Department of Public Works, Bob Kuhn, who I work with, who did an excellent job of training Mohammed Al Shatell, and Mohammed's in the back out there. Outside here, but you know, the first time I met Mohammed, it was when we were doing sidewalks. Although, boy, didn't you hate to get that notice? I can tell you as a commissioner, those were the worst meetings. Sidewalk and road assessments. And thank you, Commissioner Larson, for getting us moving off of that. But it was sidewalks down on Lake Shore Drive and Mann Street and then when I reconstructed a house, I had some issues with the driveway and Mohammed and I had some interesting conversation, but he was always a professional, always a gentleman, and stayed right on task for the city. And I've always admired him for that. Tim Paul and his group in the Finance Department, there's no one better with dollars and cents than Tim Paul. There is no one better in the Department of Public Works, I can tell you, in my opinion. I haven't worked with a bunch of them, but I can tell you, you can't get better people than we have here working in the city. Same with Kathy Brubaker-Clark. Public safety. Tony Klybaker was here when I came in. Came to us from Michigan State University, brought a lot of wonderful assets to this community. His experience in Michigan State University helped this community grow, particularly when it came to running events and how to get people in and out of this community as our community has grown in events. And now we have Chief Jeff Lewis, who's a wonderful asset to this community. He's a great police officer, he's a great community leader, and we're very, very fortunate that he and his wife have chosen to become a part of our community and he will do some wonderful things for the city. I want to thank the employees, people at the frontline.
Pete Pratt.
Look at Mohammed. See, Mohammed shows me a pack of cigarettes. Another thing I'll tell you about ten and a half years, ten and a half years I quit smoking cigarettes.
Gained thirty-five.
But I got married to a great lady, so, so a lot of positive things. I want to thank the firefighters, Fire Department, Pete Hughes, for the leadership in changing the direction of fire service in this community. We needed as a community to take a different direction. We needed to unfortunately, to supplement and make sure that our community was safe when it came to fire. We could only afford to do it with a certain amount of full-time people and a certain amount and then bring in part-time people. That's not an easy adjustment for a full-time fire department. Most of these guys have been in there for years. We have a lot of senior firefighters, many who retired in the last year, not because they wanted to, but because if you don't go now, you lose these type of benefits. And it's unfortunate that that's the type of economy that we're in today, but it's the reality of it. So I want to thank the firefighters for stepping up and making the difficult decision that makes us a better and as safe community as we've always been. The men in blue and the women in blue are our police. Probably one of the most thankless jobs that there is that you could have. Don't get paid a lot, gone from your family a lot, one weekend a month maybe if you're lucky, risking their lives. And unfortunately, sometimes, gotta watch my language, catching a bunch of guff from citizens don't appreciate the work that they do. And they deserve that. Other folks that are on the line. Plow our streets, take care of the sewer lines, water line break, keep our roads as safe as it can based on the funding we have. Difficult work. Probably a department that takes more guff than any. You know, you drive by, you see two or three of them, you think they're just standing there, well, they're waiting for something to get there so that they can complete the job. But they work hard for this city. And the support staff, the rest of the people that work in the city, the frontline people, Pat Bices, Barb Schellenberger, Joan Stone, people that have worked up in the administration office that have supported this commission and me for as long as we've been there. I appreciate them taking all the phone calls that I don't want to take. And dealing with the people that call back because I didn't respond as quickly as I was asked to respond, and they've done it in a very professional manner and they're just great people. And all of the other frontline staff people who work in every one of these departments, engineering, some of the, Treasury of Finance, income tax, the clerk's office, three of the most wonderful ladies and workers that you'd ever want to run into. They work hard, as every employee does. And we've had to make cuts in the last seven or eight years where we've had to take services and people, unfortunately. We had to cut people. We've had to sit here and look at families and know that we're changing their lives by making a cut that one of the members of the family is gonna not be working. It's not what we ran for, but those are some of the tough decisions you have to make. But they're here on the frontline and I hope that the citizens throughout Muskegon County, anybody that comes to work with the city, that understands that the employees that work for the city, they're just the messengers. They've got ordinances that brought down from those of us on this council up here, state regulations, federal regulations that you're required to go by. And so when you walk in or you make that first phone call and you've got your complaint And so when you walk in or you make that first phone call and you've got your complaint about something that's happened, those are the people that are going to listen to it. And they get it when we're at our mast. And unfortunately, they're just the messenger. They've got to tell us what we don't want to hear because that's what's paid to do, but we're the folks here that have made, not all of them, but the people that sat up here before us have made these regulations. Please keep in mind, when you're working with any of the employees of the city of Muskegon, that they're just the messengers. They're just doing their job, just being told, just doing what they're being told to do by their job description. Oh, man, this is going to be a lot longer than it ought. I want to thank the citizens who stepped up to be involved in the committees, the pastors who've been here and done the prayers for city commission meetings, to the people in the city of Muskegon that have been active in their neighborhood associations, taken interest in their neighborhood, taken interest in their neighbors. We need to get back to that. I want to thank the Muskegon Chronicle. I've had a great working relationship with the Muskegon Chronicle for ten and a half years. Doesn't mean we agree on everything, because we haven't. I've written letters to the editor based on some of the things they've said, and they've called me or taken me on on some of the issues that we've faced here. But I'm going to tell you what. It's the only news source we have, folks. They've been important in all of our lives for years. I miss that paper. Gary Ostrom.
Gunnar Carlson.
Dave Kolb endorsed me first time I ran. Shocked the shit out of me. But they challenged me, and that's something the Muskegon Chronicle, and in particular, Paula Holmes-Greely and Dave Alexander have done. They've made me a better mayor than I would have been. Because they found a way to ask a question, to make me think about an issue we were facing, and through that, because I was challenged to think about it, I think as a group, we've done some great things that have happened, and probably not to some. But I want to thank them. Paul Keep, when he came in, he had an open door policy with me, and since then, that open door policy has continued. After Paul went over to Grand Rapids, Steve Westfall, Cindy Fairfield, and Clayton Hardeman along with Paula Holmes-Greely, and they've really assisted. Peg West, who's there now, she's had an open door policy, but they really, really have assisted this city in working on issues that are important, making them part of the conversation to make this a better community. So whether we agree or disagree, we owe a great deal of gratitude to the Muskegon Chronicle, and I'm so thankful they're still here providing this new service. And I've been fortunate, ten and a half years, to work with two pros. Bob Burns, who was here for, I don't know, the first five years, and Dave Alexander, who's been here for the last five. And it's the same thing with Dave Alexander. Do we socialize together? No. But I have a certain respect and a certain amount of passion for that man because he's made me a better person. The, you know, the successes we've shared in the last ten and a half years. Bill Larson told me after I announced, you know, as you begin to think about the things you've been a part of, it'll amaze you as time goes on, all the things that have been accomplished. Trust me, they weren't accomplished by Steve Warmenton. They were accomplished by a team of people. All of the elected officials that I named that I've served with, this staff, again, second to none. Muskegon is a community of thirty-eight to forty thousand people over the last ten years. We have such quality staff people and employees. Muskegon's the type of community you would think would be, I'll go to work for Muskegon for a few years, and then I'll move on to a larger community. I'll climb on my career. We even had that in the city of Muskegon. Because of the quality of life, that the people that move here, that have come in to be a part of our administrative staff, have chosen, in my opinion, that's not like I've talked to them, but I think they said, I want to stay in Muskegon because it's a great community, what a great place to raise a family. And that's why we've been able to keep quality people here. And that's what makes government move better, and that's what allowed these successes to happen. The first major decision that was made in the ten and a half years I've been the mayor, I wasn't even on the commission. Commissioners Spataro, Commissioner Schweifler, and the late Commissioner Allison made a decision, I think it was in May or June, when we had a city commission that wanted to release our city manager. And those three stood tall and made sure that it didn't happen that night. Special meeting was called for forty-eight hours later, and fortunately, some calm was restored. And what came out of that meeting was, is that the next, at the first meeting in January of 2002, the city commission at that time, with an election coming up, would decide whether we would maintain the city manager that we had at that point in time. And what's important about that is, I remember one of the commissioners at that time stating, you know, most city managers only stick around for four, only, longevity of the place is like four and a half or five years. I can't remember what it was, but it wasn't all that long. Certainly our city manager had been here longer than that. And I remember thinking to myself, and Brian's heard me share this story with managers and mayors meeting, so with Kevin, you know, every once in a while, if you compare it to baseball, every once in a while, you get a Casey Stengel, you get a Sparky Anderson, you get a Lou Pinella, you get a winner. Do you win a championship every year? No. But you're still a winner. he put together a strong team for all of us. He made this commission the best we could be. I want to thank the commissioners for allowing me to be their voice. I think it's been important in the growth of this community that I could go into meetings with community leaders, business people, people that were looking at our community to develop in this business, and I could speak for the city commission. In prior years, that might have been something that the city manager would have had to do. And our city manager's very capable of doing that, but the difference between having an elected official and a staff person do it is, I can go in and if I think, or if I know that at least four of us are in agreement, I can say, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this. The city manager, even if he thinks that there's, you've still got to come back, present it to the commission, and get an answer. And all it does is delay decisions that could be made. So to all of the commissioners that have worked with me, thank you for your confidence, thanking you for allowing me to speak for them. You know, the other thing I'll talk about is, one of the other things, is the public-private partnerships that we've been able to develop. Community Foundation, City of Muskegon, Chamber of Commerce, DMDC, City of Muskegon, Grand Valley State University, DM, or Community Foundation, again, for the Smart Zone. Palmero Tool was part of the Smart Zone. There's the private side. I don't know how many square miles, but you know what, we're not that big. Neighbors, family members that live in different communities. Damn it. Sometimes it's like we're all in the United Nations. Well, we like some of us sometimes, and then we don't like the others, and now you've got to be kidding me. Ladies and gentlemen, we live in Muskegon County. We are all Muskegon people. We need to begin to act and work together like we are neighbors and get these imaginary lines out of our minds. And it's the elected officials that have, me included. This commission that sits up here, the previous commissioners have been open-minded about doing a lot of things community-wide. We don't have any interest in taking over anybody, we don't have any interest in that. We just want to bring a value to the residents of this county for a fair buck. But there are other government entities that want to protect their territory. It's like it's high school football on Friday night. You know, we need to get better at that. And I challenge the Muskegon County Commission to become leaders in this community. I've been here for ten and a half years, and I'm going to tell you, there've been some wonderful people that have represented and been on the Muskegon County Commission. Jim Derazinsky, I consider to be a good friend. Bob Skolnick gives to this community in so many different ways. I John Snyder has been a true leader and worked with me on many things. I could go on and name the list. But I'm going to tell you, to the residents of the city of Muskegon, we haven't had one county commissioner that I believe has served the citizens of this county. Now keep in mind that we have county commissioners that represent, most of our county commissioners that represent us now, represent other communities also, and I understand that. But I'd never seen them come forward and say, you know, we got this item coming up on our agenda. What's the city's thoughts on this? They stop in the city commission meetings, and I recognize them, and that's all fine, but they don't get up, they don't have a meeting with any of us. We need to change the attitude at the county commission. We need people that are going to represent the people of this county, not a party, not a particular interest group, not a particular subject, but the people of this county. They need to begin to bring this county together. They need to work on bringing us together. They represent all of us, and the discussion and the leadership needs to come from that table, and not leave it to the individual communities to do the work that should be done by the county. Crosslake Ferry Service is one. Why should the city of Muskegon have been responsible to bring Crosslake Ferry Service to this community? That should have been something from the county, but they didn't have the leadership to step up and take it. So the city had to do it. The city of Muskegon residents put up $1.6 million for that project. The county, $200,000. That doesn't have anything to do with why you can't have transportation. I just helped you, honey. Don't go now. Because starting next month, I'm on this side. Just kidding you. You know, personalities are different. Every one of us has a different personality, and most of us, our personalities change. Personality of the city commissions over my ten and a half years, they've changed. They've changed as new people have come on board, and they've changed as issues come up and what our interests are. You know, we had the commission of love that first year, we're coming off all the ruckus of what we had prior to Gowron, Warmenton, Larson joining the ward commissioners at that time. And, you know, I told Dave Alexander, he said, you know, what made it the commission of love? And I'll tell you, in my opinion, what made it the commission's love is we had some success. When that Smart Zone, when we got that thing going, there was so much pride that came through. We felt good about ourselves as a community, we felt good about us as a commission that we'd moved forward, that we had done something solid for this community. Now, has it turned out quite the way we want to? Not yet, but it will. We're a leader, and it will. And the personality's going to change again. I'm going to leave, we're going to have a new mayor. I point to that because that's just the way I think it's going to go, and I think it's... I don't know, I don't have a vote, but I still got fingers at point. And we're going to replace a seat up here. And so that personality's going to change. But the one thing that is not going to change is the love and the caring for this community. And I hope you can see that tonight. We understand these folks have got some issues with, but we've got issues with dollars and cents, so we're trying to find something. And I appreciate Mr. Nye for coming forward with an idea and taking the challenging idea. Thank you very much for that. So this commission, as we move forward, is going to continue to do the good work of this city, because they love this city. And they'll continue to represent us well, and they'll continue to represent us tough. There's some tough things that are going to happen, and there's some tough battles ahead for us. But we've got a strong city commission that will do it. You know what? I just turned sixty-two, I just had one of those things that I want to say something, and you know what? And I'm not even good at throwing guns. But, you know, Task Force, that Task Force came about because, really, discussion with the Muskegon Chronicle and I'm so happy that that happened. I'm not happy for the reasons that we had to have a Task Force, but I'm going to continue to do the work on that Task Force. I've talked to most of our commissioners here about the work that I want to continue to be a part of, and that Task Force is one. Our work in this community is far from being done as far as a Task Force for getting our community right, getting our kids so that they can read, and there's many, many things that I'm going to continue to work on. I'm certainly, I have a very, very strong interest in cooperating with services. And because I'm not an elected official, effective July 1st, I can take a different tack on explaining to the citizens of this city why we need to get rid of civil service. And I hope that the citizens will be open-minded and understand that an archaic system today worked wonderful in the twenties and thirties. It's almost a hundred years later, folks. We need to get current. We need to bring in an HR department. We need to be able to make decisions to hire employees as they come forward and they're good employees. We're losing good employees. We now, with our fire department, we now have part-time people that we are training to be firefighters. You know what their dream is? Their dream is to become a full-time firefighter for the city of Muskegon when there is an We started this, Pete, help me, when was the first one that came on?
January.
January. Almost six months ago. We have lost, or will lose, two of our firefighters because they found full-time positions somewhere else. Not much we could do about that, we didn't have an opening. But the point is, is we spent time training these firefighters. And I want to make a comment also in that, I want to thank the firefighters for welcoming these new part-time firefighters in. We could have had a firestorm, whether, you know, we don't like it, your part-timers coming in and all that, and our fire department didn't do that. They knew they needed the help. They knew it made it safer for them to make safety correct for us. So I applaud the firefighters in the city of Muskegon for welcoming them and making them feel a part of the team, and please pass that on, Pete. Where was I?
Civil service.
Civil service, thank you. So I, listen, we need... So I, listen, we need to repeal that. We need to become a modern city. We are a modern city, we just have an old-time hiring system. If you're an elected official, there's a lot of things you can't say about when it comes up in a ballot issue. I'll no longer be an elected official, so I can speak freely on it, and I, please invite me to your neighborhood association service clubs, and I'll be happy to speak on it. In closing, I've got piles of paper all over. Can you imagine ten and a half years? Let me tell you, first of all, how many trees have died on wasted paper that gets sent to elected officials that has never looked at? And I've got piles of paper inside my home, and my wife is waiting for Sunday when she can begin to throw it out. You know, I come home, I start a pile, and she'll move it into a box, and I'll say, "Well, don't throw it away, there might be something in there I need, I'll get to it when I get there." Well, I don't get to it, so we'll go. But we might be throwing the piles of paper away, but I won't throw away or lose the memories that I've had representing you. One other, selfish, but Joan will probably be able to identify whether this is a kind I'm fortunate enough to still have my mother and father. they've been very proud of me before, but for them to be able to say, "My son..." I know, there's been a lot to them, so, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve. It has been a privilege to serve you. It has been a privilege to work with all of you, and I love this county. We're a great place, and we're only going to get better. Thanks for sticking around. Let's get the vote out in November. Let's get senior transit so these poor folks don't have to worry about you guys coming here again. And my last comment before we go into closed session is that if anybody out there starts to treat this commission or the employees rudely when they get up... Listen, when it comes to public comment, I'm going to tell you what, we love the fact that the citizens of this community care enough to come and speak, care enough to come and share your visions and ideas with the city. But when you get up there to speak, and I'm only speaking for myself, when you get up to speak and I think you're talking down to me, talking because I'm a like, you don't agree with what I'm, you lose me. I'm not, I'm polite, but I'm not listening a word that you say. Now, one, so when you come to speak to the city commission, even if you got a gripe, and many of you do, and many of them are legitimate, please speak to these people with decorum and respect. They're your neighbors. They can be your friends. They are working for you. So please, give them the respect and the employees of this city the respect that they deserve.
Well, you're probably going to do that for the last time, so it'll be a pleasure to say, "I move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing property acquisition." Did I get that right?
Do I have a second? Did somebody?
I did.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Spatar, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to go into closed session to discuss property acquisition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, pardon me. Oh, wow. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Waringo?
Yes.
Mr. Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Warmenton?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Spatar?
Yes.
Mr. German?
Yes.
Mr. Pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for being here tonight, thank you for your support, and let's get the vote out in November to get this senior transit passed.
And to get rid of civil service, I might add.